Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this joint convention of the school committee and the select board. Today is Monday, October 23rd, 2023, and this joint convention is held in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 11. Section 11 requires that the remaining members of the school committee and the members of the select board meet in joint convention and vote to temporarily fill the school committee vacancy until the next town election, which will be in May of 2024. We are pleased that six candidates have submitted an application to be considered for this vacancy. The candidates will be interviewed this evening in alphabetical order. Each candidate will have three minutes to make opening remarks, after which school committee and select board members will ask follow-up questions of each candidate. We plan to allot 10 minutes to each candidate. Before the interviews begin, Select Board Chair Green and I have several procedural votes to take care of. So first, I'm going to make a motion for the school committee to enter into this joint convention with the select board for the purpose of interviewing applicants and possibly selecting a candidate to fill the school committee vacancy until the May 2024 town election. Is there a second? Thank you, Helen. Stephen, your vote?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Natalia?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Bernard, over to you.
Okay. On behalf of the select board, I move that we enter into the joint convention with the school committee for the purpose of interviewing applicants and possibly selecting a candidate to fill the school committee vacancy until the May 2024 town election. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyak?
Aye.
Miriam Ashkenazi?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, so we're now in the convention.
All right, so now the joint convention must choose a clerk, and this will require two separate votes, one by the school committee and one by the select board. So I'm going to make a motion for nominations for the role of clerk of the joint convention. Is there any discussion first on who that would be? I will mention that Betsy Fitzpatrick is available to fulfill that role, and typically it is the executive assistant of the school committee who fills that role, but we can choose anyone.
I nominate Betsy Fitzpatrick.
I guess we have separate votes.
Right. Go ahead, Bernard, for the select board.
All in favor of the nomination of Betsy Fitzpatrick to serve as clerk of this joint convention, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyak?
Aye.
Miriam Ashkenazi?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
And also, just as a technicality, were there any other nominations? We need to close nominations first.
Oh, sorry.
Looks like there were none. All right, so now on the school committee side, I am going to move that we also go with Betsy Fitzpatrick. Is there a second? Thank you, Valerie. Any other nominations? Seeing none, let's go ahead. Stephen?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Natalia?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. All right, now we need to do something for a third time, which is the motion to appoint her as clerk of the joint convention, since we have each done this individually. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. I think Helen said it first.
Oh, go ahead. I give her to her.
Well, let's just keep it simple. Everybody says yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Are we yet to take a roll poll vote?
Yes, we do need roll poll call vote. Go ahead, Bernard.
Okay. For the motion to appoint Betsy Fitzpatrick as clerk of the joint convention, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyak?
Aye.
Miriam Ashkenazi?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
All right, now we need to do the same on the school committee side. Stephen?
Yeah.
Andy?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Natalia?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. All right, now the next step is the joint convention must choose a chair. So does someone want to make a nomination for chair of the joint convention?
I nominate David Pearlman.
Okay, thank you. School committee votes. Stephen?
Any other nominations, I think you need?
Any other nominations? All right, seeing none. Stephen?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Natalia?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
And I also vote yes.
Okay, for the select board, all those in favor of the election of David Pearlman as chair of the joint convention, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyak?
Aye.
Miriam Ashkenazi?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
All right, so we will now proceed to interviewing the candidates. We have six applicants, the joint, and I'm going to be calling on them in alphabetical order. Ms. Fitzpatrick will promote each candidate individually as they are being called up. So first, we have Mr. Arthur Conquest.
David, maybe you could repeat the procedure again, in case people?
We will be going in alphabetical order by last name of the six applicants. Each applicant will be delivering a three-minute opening statement. After we hear from all the candidates from their opening remarks, we will then have an opportunity, all of us, to ask follow-up questions. And we need to be mindful about being roughly equal in our follow-up questions to all the candidates. Then after that, we will have a discussion regarding who we would like to select. So first up is Mr. Arthur Conquest, and I see that he has now joined us. Whenever you're ready, you can begin.
Can you? Can you see me now? But can you hear me?
I can hear you, don't see you.
Damn. Sorry. I'll try it again. There we go. Is that all right?
Yes, see you now.
All right, thank you. Unfortunately, I'm battling COVID. Have been for the last week now, unfortunately, but I'll try my best. Arthur Conquest, 116, 115 Tappan Street. You've gotten a copy of my resume, okay, and a letter, so I'm not going to repeat most of what is on the resume or the letter, but, okay? Why do you want to be a school committee member was the question. There is a void in the representation of black, of the black population in Brookline on the school committee, which just shouldn't be. Not only should we be on board, but our voices need to be heard as well. I have been involved with Brookline community activities since September 1982, starting with the Black Achievement Initiative at the high school. Not for much of that time, a black has been a member of the school committee. Not always a member of my liking, but a black nevertheless. It's been less than maybe four years since one of our voices has been heard on the school committee, however. The vital I submitted with my application will surely describe what attributes, knowledge, and experiences I bring with me if selected to serve. I am planning on seeking an additional school committee term in the, in May election. I can't, and that's the question. Am I planning on seeking an additional school committee term in May election? I can't and won't answer that question. I honestly won't know until I experience what I've been serving on as a committee member, if selected, and I see how the experience and workload proceeds during the get acquainted with terrain, time, commitment, and responsibilities period comes to pass. What two or three attributes of the schools of Brookline do I consider most important and enduring? What sets Brookline apart from other systems in a positive way? Or what attributes or program have I encountered, if any, that has troubled me? And what do I think the committee can and should try to do about it? The committee, quote, I'm quoting, "The committee and the department stated that through collaboration, they find new sources of learning and strength." "The public schools of Brookline says it is act, that it actively promotes collaborative relationships." Quote, "We seek our partnerships with our community organizations that add value to our school system." "We urge and support collaborative and exchange within this and across our school community." "I ask what programs and organizations exist in the black and Latino communities that interact with the school department and create positive collaborative relationships that improve and enhance academic achievement for black and brown students in the schools." Hiring?
I don't like to interrupt, but because this, we have to be equal with everyone, you're a little over three minutes, if you can please wrap up.
I will. Hiring, interacting, and interfacing with subcontract, and subcontracting with what Dr. Martin Luther King described as liberals is antiquated. And those of us who want real community collaboration and see things in a different way are not trouble, are not troublemakers, malcontents, nor are we social misfits. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next we have Ms. Sarah Moktater. All right, Ms. Moktater, whenever you're ready. And please correct me if I'm mispronouncing your last name.
I'm sorry. Now can you hear me?
We can, yes.
I'm sorry about that. Okay. So I'm Sarah Moktater, and you did pronounce it right.
But we can't see you, just so you know.
Oh, so sorry. I, I had thought that when it was a, I had thought that when it was a webinar, that when I accepted, both of those would be there, so sorry about that. Oh, you still can't see me, can you? There we go.
Yes.
Here we go. So you did have my name pronounced right. I'm Sarah Moktater, and I have a mass multifaceted view of the schools. I'm a parent of a seventh grader at Lawrence, and all three of my kids started out at PSB. I have been a resident since 2004, and I'm a current town meeting member. And I've been at the schools for 15 years as a middle school teacher, and I also have a master's in education. So I believe that I can represent our community well, given my familiarity with our school system. All of us share a common goal: first-rate schools that engage students. We all want what is best for young people in our town. The person who takes on this vacancy will have to be a quick study, and I have knowledge of our schools since when I first moved here and started working at PSB in 2004. And as a parent of the community, I've also been a part of the discussion about building new schools for the last 15 years. Every decision that we make comes back to our young people. When we evaluate whether a school program should be initiated or maintained, we look at the, at the degree to which the program serves our students. We offer programming with a goal of a high level of achievement in mind, and while being cognizant that there has to be equity for all learners. And in doing so, we can't forget the joy of learning. Our school committee has shown that to be a goal. And we know that we, that that learning relies on the students' social emotional needs, because when students are regulated, they engage and learn. And most importantly, we account for and celebrate human difference and give access to all. The strategic plan for the schools makes it clear that 80% of our goals are aligned with equity. As a school committee member, I will help our current central administration commit to the ongoing work of equity in our schools and make sure the initiatives that we have already implemented are continued. We need to rely on institutional knowledge, so we don't embark on new initiatives without taking into account what we've already done. As we've lacked stability in the central office, at times we quickly start new initiatives instead of sticking to long-term planning. With experienced individuals on the school committee, we will be able to guide PSB to have continuity with our goals. To this, and I would like to offer to be a liaison with the Office of Educational Equity if I was to take the vacancy. The challenge is to take these steps within the parameters of the budget that we have before us. One of our next steps ahead is to follow through with suggestions from the middle school review. It's become apparent to us that we need to better manage our schedules, which also has implications on policy. There isn't a current point person for middle school scheduling, and we need to determine our mission in this area to be more thoughtful in how we proceed. My criteria for evaluating funding is to make use of the past investments as we go forward. One example of that would be the World Language Program. We've already invested in a review of the program, and the program is fully funded. So what smart decisions can we make to implement the findings of the review to make a stronger program? Or otherwise said, how can we get the most out of our current investment and add to it in ways that further leverage what we've already done? I hope you will consider me for vacancy on the school committee. I hope to serve until May and then run for the seat in that election.
Thank you, Ms. Moktater. We will now move on to Ms. Young Park. Whenever you're ready, Ms. Park.
So now can you see me?
Yes.
And can you hear me?
We can.
Yes. So I just, I had no idea what the meeting could be like, so I'm gonna make a very simple statement. Simple, very informal. And my name is Young Park, and usually people, I just usually introduce myself young, forever young. And my family and I have lived here, Brookline, ever since 2007. So it has been like 16 years. When we were looking for a school for our son Jeremy, just somebody recommended Brookline, the town of Brookline. So we just, we seriously, we put serious thought on this town, and we just found a very small, very small condo, and we just purchased it and moved in. We just, just no complaint. We love our neighbor. We love the town of Brookline. Jeremy and my family have only had great experience in the town of Brookline, the schools. And this is my own way to express my own thanks for the town of Brookline and the schools. So that's why I decided to apply for this vacancy. I see myself as having heart of educator and teacher. And if I have a chance to serve the town, I always have a thought it could be something around or in the school system, so I found this vacancy. For the last two, three years, I have been in the Brookline High School's parents committee meetings as a community member. Just my understanding about the public school systems in general and the Brookline, the town, my understanding just was another level. I just understood things much better. Hearing from the teachers, what they teach, how they teach, why they teach in certain way, really gave me such a, like a great sense of understanding, and I feel like, oh, that should be really right, right? Yes, right, sort of things. And it was a great experience, so I feel like I was ready to move on to try to different, challenge myself, also to try to see the things and participate in different things, so that is why I'm here. Brookline schools are just great. The first number one priority when I see is of course diversity, as I'm sure many people agree. When I saw that different primary schools having different foreign language programs, I just, when I saw that like years ago for first time, I feel like I, that should be the something I really want to belong to, and I feel like, I just feel like it was a very welcoming and warm. That could be another reason, but I know I'm not the only one to appreciate such a kind of diversity and provide different programs and show the respect of so many different people. That's why even me, somebody like me, speaking English as a second language, also wanted to try, and also wanted to try be in part and join the program and committed. Budget-wise, I just put, how much do I know? I do not know much about it. However, just only one thing I was realizing while through Brookline High School Programs Committee meetings. Building, just I'm gonna make it very simple. Education, school, teacher should be the number one priority. No matter what, it should be the invested on teacher, human resources.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm trying to be fair to all six candidates, so you've gone a bit over three minutes, if you can please?
I'm done then. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Mr. Stephen Readers.
Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay, thanks very much. And you can see me, okay? Can you?
Yes.
So thank you for the chance to apply. I thought first I'd tell you who I am. I practiced medicine for eight years and 121 days, and after that turned to the science of genetics, where I found mutations for three sorts of kidney diseases. And subsequently, I figured out how humans came to have one fewer chromosome than AIDS. That got me a job in the United States, and I moved to teach at Yale. And for the last 25 years, I've been the founding partner of a successful healthcare fund. And what we do is we use our skills to bring forward novel medical technologies on behalf primarily of foundations, pension funds, and governments. So what I do day to day is to build, finance, and focus teams of people to think, to succeed in what is the almost impossible task of developing novel ways to treat patients who find themselves in scary predicaments. I believe the school committee, in addition to the many perspectives brought by current committee members, could use the skills I've developed in getting things done and to absorb a viewpoint that I think is widely expressed in the town, but not often heard among the school's governors. It's fair of you to ask what my views are on schools, and they are simply to provide what the wisest parents want. And what parents want overwhelmingly are the best teachers spending as much time as they can teaching their children. Parents want to provide their children with the ability to think critically, to find and assimilate knowledge so they can achieve their potential when they leave home. They want them to be able to use language and numbers easily and know enough about science and logic to form their own judgments and make their own decisions. In short, they just want great teachers teaching the conventional subjects. They don't want their kids to receive someone else's ideology or view of the world. In addition to this viewpoint, I have one specific issue. I came from a stratum of society where opportunity was closed off for almost all people in my social class. Actually, it was closed off at the age of 11. And if you didn't make it at the age of 11, you couldn't go to college. And I'm passionate about one thing, which is not to allow that to happen in any group in our town. And this is expressed most commonly as the achievement gap or the opportunity gap. And we have a very substantial achievement or opportunity gap in Brookline, and we simply cannot allow this massive, and in my view unconscionable gap between black or Hispanic children and whites or Asians to continue, let alone to continue to get worse as it has done recently. Now, there are ways to deal with this. It's going to be hard, and it's going to require significant focus, but I believe it can be done. And the first step is to set firm targets of what we want to achieve, targets that can easily be measured, and I believe over a five-year period, we should make it a priority in our town to close this gap to within a very small interval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Readers. We will now move on to Ms. Carolyn Thaw.
Okay, you can see me, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you very much for this opportunity and the opportunity to be with these other terrific candidates. I think most of you on the panels actually know me, because I am a participant. I'm experienced in this space, because I've been present in town and school issues and government workings for a solid eight years now. I'm not looking to get involved. I am involved. I have a skill set and knowledge that would complement the work of this school committee. I have experience with the budget process, considering the choices and stresses of allocating funds. I'm knowledgeable about capital improvement projects, and I've supported teachers, students, and administrators while also understanding the reality of budget constraints. Importantly, I see the big municipal picture. I see the interconnectedness of the pieces. The critical parts of a complex system do not best serve the whole when they're in silos. In roles where I have a vote, I'm not predictable, because I'm not ideological. I'm at a political. I don't have a particular personal agenda. I like facts. I don't like jargon. I can unpack complexity and identify nuance. I have relationships across constituent groups. I'm very interested in transparency and what it means to be a public body, serving the public. I appreciate the school committee's recent conversations about the need to connect with and provide information to the public. I love our public schools and the people who run them and work in them. I support unionized labor, and I want Brookline's teachers to be able to bring all the love, professionalism, and dedication that they have to work every day, because I believe 100% that is what they strive to do. We need to keep attracting and retaining the caliber of amazing people that have made Brookline what it has been for decades. We need enough of those amazing people in classrooms facing our students. The K-8 model is one of the things that makes Brookline unique, and I hope that right now PSB is cognizant of what historically stakeholders have loved about this model and is asking whether we're still providing those experiences. And Brookline High School is an amazing institution, in my view, and based on relatively limited but personal experience, I think BHS and its lead- I think BHS and its leadership should be a model for the district and should be supported thoroughly and thoughtfully. To sum up, I care about this public school system. I'm applying for this position because I can offer skills, experience and a clear analytical perspective to the committee as it navigates what it means to support a healthy and excellent school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thaw. Next we have Ms. Elena Zaretsky. Excuse me, I believe it's Dr. Zaretsky.
You and its video. For some reason, I cannot open the video.
I did see you momentarily, so if you want to try.
I see my name. I know that you can hear me.
There we go.
Got it. Okay, I just want to thank the committee for giving me this opportunity. This was an interesting decision for me because I've been resident in Brookline since 1986, permanently. Before that, we moved to Brookline when we first moved to the United States in 1973. My children went through Brookline Schools. I actually worked in Brookline High School. Throughout my life, I had different professions. I would, I was professionally trained pianist and that's the capacity I worked in Brookline High School as an accompanist in the music department. I worked with Carlton Doctor at that point. Then I changed my profession and became speech language pathologist. And I again worked within public school system, not in Brookline, but within Boston Public School System. So I'm very much aware of inequity, of the problems that we have with different contingency of students and the problems that we have with students who have any differences. My next step was getting a PhD in developmental psychology. So I know the underpinning of how children think, what we need to instill in children. So they will be real thinkers and they will stay for themselves and understand what is going on in this world. Why I love Brookline Public School System. I think honestly, it's the best. I do like the model from kindergarten to eight and actually other school system moving towards it. Particularly Boston Public School System. It's now moving towards that particular system. I think the teachers are fantastic. I still remember my children saying, oh, Mr. Daly said that. Social status. So I believe that we can do a lot in promoting education. We can do a lot in making children equal in achievements. And there is a gap and we, we know that. So there is work to be done and I can bring in my skills and my knowledge about how children learn, how children behave, what is behind their behaviors and what can be done to increase their opportunities and to increase their abilities to learn and be a good members of this society. I have to confess that I'm not a business person. Therefore, I know about the strategic directions and I know about the budgets, but you know, in that sense, I, I don't have that knowledge, but I do have a knowledge of how children learn and what needs to be done for the children to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zaretsky. Now, at this point, what we will do is ask questions of the candidates and we can call them back one by one. So why don't we begin with Mr. Conquest? And if anyone has questions for Mr. Conquest? And I see that Dr. Ashkenazi has her hand raised, so go ahead.
Thank you very much. Hang on, I actually wrote my question ahead of time, so let me just grab it. Arthur, thank you very much. I, I, first of all, I agree with your assessment that we lack representation in the school committee of Black and Brown people. But what I'm, what I'm hoping is you can give some examples of how you would like to address some of these issues, especially the equity issues that we are struggling with in the school system. Thank you.
Do you mean with students? Do you mean with staff? Do you?
How, any, anything, any, any, all of those are issues. So anywhere that you have ideas that you would, that you would carry forward or try to, to work on.
Well, in, in terms of the, the school committee, I think the first thing that is important, I'm, I'm not saying it's a super paramount, paramount, but if you have us sitting at the table, or at least those of us who have a commitment to this sitting at the table to bring the issue forward. That's step number one. It's very easy to lose sight or to, to lose focus on the whole issue of differences, diversity, etc., other points of view is not to have us at the table. And so that's number one. For someone, for someone like me, you know, it's a commitment that I have, a lifelong commitment. And as you know, from other committees that I've sat on, that has always been a top priority for me. So that's where I think it has to start.
Thank you.
Mr. Green?
Yes, thank you, David. So, Mr. Conquest, you mentioned, you mentioned a lot of important issues as they relate, especially to Black and Hispanic children. But in my opinion, the key criteria for all the candidates is temperament and the ability to work both within the school committee and with other town bodies and town leaders. And I guess this is a provocative question, but given your many years of hostility and public defamatory attacks on me, the most senior Black leader in town, do you think you have the temperament to serve on the school committee as an effective Black leader?
Again, I'd address this with you, Bernard, in public. I've made a public statement in opposition to you, but it had, and it had to do with the Gerald Austin case. I thought it was a legitimate statement that I needed to make. And you know, you're in the hot seat and you have to be willing to be sensitive to criticisms that are going to come your way. As I said, you were part of a very important lawsuit that was brought against the town. And I had some questions about how you would interface as the chair of the Dr. Martin Luther King Celebration Committee. That was my, my criticism of you. And I respect you as a human being. I respect you as a citizen. I've never disrespected you. I'm not hostile towards you. Okay?
Disagree on that.
I, I, that's, that's, that's possible, okay? But that's your sensitivity. But it's that one statement that I made, okay, which I didn't finish.
You made multiple statements. It's not my sensitivity. It's the question of your temperament as a member of the school committee to work with other town leaders.
I have worked. Bernard, I have worked with other people.
Questions about school committee service. You asked your question and he's answered it. Why don't we go to Helen now? Helen?
Thank you. I'm actually going to ask the same question of all the candidates, so you don't have to come back to me. Every candidate can answer it. I would like to know if you supported the Pierce School Project in the last election. So that would be my question for each candidate.
Well, since I'm up, I mean, you know, you're, I'm the first person in.
Of course. Thank you. Yes, please.
I supported the Pierce School override or whatever, okay? And I participated in many of the forums that, I took tours of the, of the Pierce School. And so I think the town has done the right thing in bringing decent education, you know, whether it's elevators, okay? Whether it's staircases, whatever, narrow staircases or whatever, hallways for the children of our system, of our town.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Conquest? Suzanne?
Yeah, thank you, David. Hi, Arthur. Arthur, you served on the search committee, I believe, for superintendent with me many others. So thank you for that service. I, and you were on the committee when the search committee, when we selected Dr. Gilery as our candidate. I'm wondering how you feel you would best support Dr. Gilery as superintendent of our schools?
I would support him as, as best I can, whatever support he, he needs, okay? To, to bring him that. I mean, he's a new person to this community. You know, I've been here since 1984. And so whatever knowledge I have, whatever experience I have, whatever relationships that I have with people and I'll just use what happened a couple of days ago with statements that people were attacking him on, I, I just simply added, you know, in a email that he, he could have, he, he should have used Facing History, which was right, you know, three steps from his, from his front door. And I think, I don't think, I, I received, oh, maybe three or four very, very positive emails from residents saying that that was, you know, a very important piece that Dr. Kilory would be able to use to try and add resources for faculty within his administration.
Thank you.
Did, did I answer your question? I'm sorry.
I mean, you started to, yes. I didn't know if there, I think, anything else specifically you had in mind, but, but you did answer the question.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Conquest? So one that I have, could you describe what your criteria would be for evaluating the effectiveness of a program?
That kind of came up as one of the questions that was part of the questionnaire. And the, the only thing that, that I would add is that bringing the, bringing people or bringing groups that have ideas or proposals or programs within the system, because you talk about collaboration with people in the community is to actually have a, a committee or not just have individuals, individual school committee members. School committee members meet one-on-one with a person. And I'm talking about the incident that took place last February in the front of Brookline High School. And I specifically contacted someone from the school committee to, because parents in the community asked me to ask someone in the school, on the school committee, what was going to be the results, okay? Of the research or the investigation that came as a result of that incident. And I got nowhere. So if I had a, a committee that I could have attacked, attend, you know, contacted and maybe it existed, but no one ever came, came back to me to report on what happened.
All right. Thank you. I see that. Mr. Van Sklak has a question. Go right ahead.
Yes. Thank you very much. And thank you, Arthur, for years of volunteer service to the town. Arthur, I know from personal experience that you are very passionate and very concerned about the Black achievement gap. And I wonder if you would just give us a few words of your thoughts on that subject.
I'm going to go about it in a roundabout way. But I mentioned it in my, my, my letter to the, to the committee for this position. You don't come from a community any lower than where I come from. And every child can achieve. Okay, I've gone from the very lowest to the very highest. It's possible. We have to believe that every child can achieve, not just say it, but actually believe it. And if it means that I have to, you know, scream to the high heavens, every child can achieve. Every child can do the best that they can possibly, okay, be if we believe in them. So I want that, I want Brookline, I want the town of Brookline to be able to say we're the one town in the whole country that is doing something that no other community is doing, which is bringing the bottom to the top. In the city of Baltimore, every single child in the city, every Black child in the city of Baltimore failed the math. Call it the MCAS, that's whatever it's called, okay? Every single child, not one child passed the math state exam. Tell me that's not horrible. And it's scandalous and an embarrassment to that city. But I, I want Brookline to be able to say, every single Black and Brown child in our town achieved on the math MCAS exam. That's, that would be an achievement that we could yell to the high heavens to the rest of the world. And I think it's, I don't think, I know it's possible.
Thank you, Arthur.
All right. Thank you. All right. Why don't we now ask questions to our next candidate? So let's see if you could promote Ms. Smoke Tutter. All right. So who would like to go first to ask Ms. Smoke Tutter a question? Mr. Green?
Hey, I was quicker than I thought. Thank you. Yeah, of course, temperament is my criteria for all the candidates. And I'd like everyone to just sort of indicate their ability to work well with other people in the playpen of the school committee and town government generally. But I think your experience as a parent with children with different learning abilities and needs is important, not just for children with IEPs, but also for the broader student body. And can you elaborate on how your experiences as a parent, but also professionally, can inform the school committee on issues of how to deal with? can inform the school committee on issues of how to deal with learning differences, particularly as that relates to the gap between the achievement of black and white students?
Yeah, I'm really glad that these are questions that are coming up when we're talking about this, because that sort of seems to be at the heart of it. So I sort of see your question is in two pieces, right, is getting along with the school committee, and then also looking at what students really need and how that might be a part of what I've done in the past, right? So I've thought about being on the school committee before, and the current configuration of the school committee really gives me a lot of hope. I see that there's a lot of civility right now and respect, even when there's differences of opinion. And so this is the school committee that I, you know, want to try to be a member of. And I think that there's a lot of work to do as while you're governing, right? So you have, the collaboration is really at the center of all of it. I totally appreciate your your question also, as as being a parent, like, what is our role in the community in order to make sure that we're bringing along everybody, right? Our schools are not just for a few. Our schools are for everybody. And I'm having trouble right now connecting to that in a meaningful way. I'm sorry, but it is a value of mine. I think that when we every initiative we look at, we need to make sure that's an initiative that serves all kids, and we need to look at kids as individuals so that what we're doing serves them. And I'm not really sure to say how being a parent fits into that.
Well, you've had to struggle with the schools in terms of issues that come up with their kids. And, you know, I'm sure you've learned certain things that work and certain things that don't work. And, you know, it's, and you have children both with IEPs and without IEPs. And, you know, I would think that what you've learned from working with the schools with, of course, your children with IEPs has been very informative of how you may be seeing problems with your other kid or how your other kids are treated in school because of, you know, slight differences that they may have. I guess that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's that's really good. And, you know, that that just because that's what works for your kid doesn't mean that you're going to advocate for that for every kid, right? Because the solution is going to have to be to be different. And if your and if your heart is really in it for everybody, that there's not going to be one answer for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Helen, go ahead. I think this is your Pierce question.
This is my Pierce question. I'm asking it of everybody.
So I did, I did vote for Pierce. You know, we entered into this situation at one point with our schools where we had a couple of different schools and we needed to renovate. And the Pierce community was just always right there loving their school, even when it had, you know, it wasn't a building that served us very well anymore. And it was, there was a little bit of jostling between schools of, you know, who was going to go next. And I thought that the community, the teachers, the parents, the students had done a really good job of making that building work for really as long as they could. And so when it was Pierce's turn, I felt that even though that wasn't where my kids were, and that wasn't where I was teaching, I've taught in at Heath, at Ridley, at Lawrence, and at Runkel. Even though that wasn't a school that I was connected to, I felt 100% on board for supporting the project.
Thank you.
Mr. Sandman?
Thank you. I'm going to say to all of the candidates, I think this is a, I admire your ability to navigate this rather tough format. It'd be much better if we're all soon together sharing a cup of coffee or something of that sort. Sarah, when you're on the school committee, you're on the other side of the table from the Brookline Education Association, or are you? When it comes to working with the BEU, how do your experience and interests as a teacher sync up with your responsibility as a school committee member?
Well, when I left the classroom in June, I was, you know, a dues paying member to the union. And I've decided not to renew that as I run for school committee. I think that I I'm happy to have my experience of knowing the way that the union works and knowing when the union is there for teachers. But the school committee is really a time for me to join for as my role as a parent. So I've decided that I I'm not going to be a union candidate.
Thank you.
Mr. Warren?
Hi, thank you, Chair Perlman. And hi, Sarah. Thank you for your your application. Just a quick question. We recently had a pretty significant jump in class size at the high school. It seemed to have caught a number of the community members and parents by surprise. And I'd love to hear your thoughts about what you see the role of the school committee in class size and planning for class size and preventing, you know, a situation that we currently have today.
Yeah, I think that the school committee wanted to be able to answer the question about that and wasn't really prepared. And so what what members of the school committee have been doing has has been to look into it right now. And, you know, we all know that it's the assistant head of school that does the scheduling for the high school, and it's under the guidance of the senior director of teaching and teaching and learning for secondary education. And this happens to us every year. We get new students late in the game. And we have to, you know, scramble to make the schedule work. We've seen this now in our K to eight, K, our K to eight schools and in the high school. And the school committee, I don't think, has had the time yet to really figure out when that happened, when when it became apparent to the high school that the class sizes were going to be larger. And I, you know, I've been asking around to try to figure out if that had already been determined. And I don't think that we know yet. So with some grace of not knowing the full story yet, I think that we that we have to assume it probably happened when there, when it was too late in the game to make a new schedule. And a new schedule has so, you know, we had 90 additional kids at the high school. We were down two teachers. And that probably means that extra 90, you know, means that you need new classes in all your different core subjects, right? So we're talking about a lot of an addition. So seeing that we can't really resolve this one quickly for this year, the school committee is kind of in a situation of looking, going forward at how we can be very intentional about the scheduling so that, you know, nobody's surprised and nobody feels blindsided in the future. And so that would have to be that when the assistant director of teaching and learning for secondary education, when it becomes apparent to him that there's going to be large class sizes, that he feels that he can come to the school committee and, you know, rely on our support for that. When it's late in the game, it's going to be hard to add a teach, you know, a new teacher in quickly. But we want to make sure that the communication is going back and forth so that the school committee can be there, you know, to the degree that we can make change happen quickly.
I just want to make sure I understand your answer. So it was scheduling administration, not the school committee? What I still, I don't understand yet what the school committee's role is in making sure that we have proper class sizes, but that's okay. It was a long answer, and I want to defer it to the next person.
Natalia?
Thanks so much, Sarah. And because I might not ask questions of everyone, I want to thank all the six candidates before I begin. This has been tremendously informative, and thank you for for stepping in. Sarah, your answer to that question actually provoked me to ask this question. And, and, you know, Paul, this is something I'm a new member of school committee that I've been thinking about in the sense of, you know, very clearly, the school committee should not be micromanaging the work of, you know, specific individuals versus setting policy and big picture, setting policy of what we would want class size to be. And because you're an educator, I feel like you do have a lot of insights, which I think is very valuable. But how do you feel you'll be able to step back? You know, and it sort of goes to somebody else had asked the question to the previous candidate route to support the superintendent, to support the vision, to support the staff, while, you know, having this inside knowledge, not stepping into their day-to-day work and keeping that distance. So I just wanted to, you know, I actually really appreciate that you have the education background. I know you said you're you're joining as a parent, but I think that's a skill that you bring. So but I am concerned about that kind of potential to micromanage or to ask us to to micromanage. So that's sort of my convoluted question.
Yeah, but the fact that you're asking the question means that you want to let educators have reign to make their choices, right? And it's not because you want to stand back and see somebody not succeed. You want to be there for them at the moment that they that they need the support as opposed to micromanaging them. So I think that I kind of flubbed a little bit explaining the class size thing. If we give contingency plans and support to our central administration, then they can act on things that in the past have eluded us, which means that when we get the the increase in class size, we're not always ready to to pivot and add more teachers. So in planning and having those conversations, you know, ahead of time, we can make it so that our central administration can ask things of us in the last minute, and we can respond to things better.
Anyone else have a question for Ms. Moctada? I'll ask a similar question, then, that I did to Mr. Conquest, which is how do you evaluate the effectiveness of a school program to your approach?
So I said a little bit of that in my introduction, which was that everything comes back to the student and the student's engagement. But I also wanted to say, and I hope I kind of brought this up as well, is that, you know, the tough part of that is always that you're, when you add something that's a new demand on the budget, you have to look at what you're taking away from. So I think that we do our best work when we leverage what we already have to its best with our, you know, with our smart planning ahead and are careful that when we do add something, it is really directly benefiting our students.
All right. Thank you. Okay, when we go to our next candidate, thank you, Ms. Moctada. Ms. Park? Who has a question for Ms. Park? Dr. Ashkenazi?
Hi, Ms. Park. Thank you for throwing your hat in the ring for this position. I read your letter and and your resume. And I'm just, I'm curious, what I'm hoping you can surface for me are what specific skills that you have that you would bring to this position on the school committee?
As you see my resume, I've been trained as a researcher in education, in the field of education. So first, in a specifically, in technical way, I can see if this program is a good, if this is schooling, this is curriculum, this is professional development, that's really worthwhile to invest it and give a funding, that this something I think I have a little more experience and insight. That's your first thing. And second, also, I'm also typical mom. So if you ask me only specific skill, that's what I want to say as the same as the one we just heard from another candidate, a former one. I also have as a teacher's mind, I can see, I can provide certain insight. So if that's really worth to invest it or give a funding or not, yes.
Ellen?
So before I ask the question, I just want to, everybody said in the beginning, and I want to reiterate, I'm really appreciative of everybody who's put their hat in. It's not an easy thing, and I appreciate all of you doing that. And I will ask my same question again about your support for the Pierce, how you you felt about the Pierce School Project and whether you supported it or not.
Actually, to be honest, I do not know much about it. Actually, when I just, I I believe I voted for that project. However, I, because I was not really deeply involved with the debate behind, both sides really sounded right. So the question you're asking that is, you just want to see how I see that kind of like building, building, construction, renovation project. My, my solid belief is that, as I mentioned already, the teachers should be the top priority. Whenever we decide in terms of a budget, what should be the top priority? What should be the top priority to give the right funding and invest? Then always the teachers. If we want to really renovate the building, it should come with a really solid justification to the point to the really teacher, really teachers and students are safe. Are they really safe? Just in terms of only efficiency, effectiveness, or just convenience, or just the level of, just a sense of being comfort wouldn't be enough to really justify if that's really worth to invest it and give a funding. That's how I see that.
All right, Stephen?
Thank you.
Thanks, David. Thank you. I see that you've studied instructional technology and you've published a great deal on on the use of digital technologies. Can you tell us a bit about your thinking about the use of technologies in the public schools of Brookline? Do you think that we're doing a good job in the use of technologies in the classroom? And are there any recommendations that you're likely to make in the year that you would spend on the committee in this position?
Yes, also, I will give you ready, just candid answers. I do not know much about it. So I do not, at this moment, I do not have any really for recommendation how the Brooklyn can be improved in that direction. However, though, I had one very meaningful conversation with Anthony Mayer years ago, just right after COVID began. Because at that time, everything was like a Zoom, every, just everybody just had to stay home and then every just class was in Zoom COVID due to COVID. However, Anthony said the school should be open always, no matter what to the, I mean, I mean, everybody should be safe. However, I really agree with what he said. To the certain degree, the school should be open. What it means is that real teaching and learning should be happen in the classroom in person. When teachers give their most, their most, their best, when teachers are giving their presence the most, that teachers and when teachers and students have a certain sense of bonding together, even if they do not aware in the classroom, real learning happens. That's how I believe it. Of course, technology is very crucial. We have to take it. But what I say is that technology, no matter what, is complementary. It just helps how to the real learning happening. It just cannot be really core in terms of, it cannot be really core. Technology is just a following, cannot be the leader and needs for education. That's how I see that.
Natalia?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Park. I had a similar sort of follow-up to to Stephen, sort of, I saw that you have a doctorate in education and technology. And, you know, I was curious about equity concerns and how you see equity playing out, and especially with AI and kind of future of how different students in our communities are able to access, not access language and other equity issues. So I was, I was wondering how you think technology could be used to to close any of the gaps that we see in terms of achievement, if at all?
Well, yes. Digital divide has been an issue. However, and this for the town of Brookline, I do not know really when you talk, when you talk, talking about equity and also digital divide, I do not know how much it, Brookline can be the example. Because it's a relatively very affluent town, everybody, actually, every student, even even very younger ones. I noticed even primary school students have their own iPhones already, so many people. So in terms of if you're talking about technology as like a digital divide or equity, I do not know if it really applies to the town of Brookline. However, though, if we want to talk about equity in a different issue, I remember last, one of the last meetings in Brookline High School. Mess class, they always had issue with like advanced class intermediate and beginner. One time, they just had a mixed group in a mess. So just mess, other best student always, he was always a sweet, very, very good one. But as soon as he was joining the mixed group with the different colleagues, students who are from beginners class in mess class, he started to get very arrogant, cocky, sort of things that got added to. he started to get very arrogant, cocky, sort of things that got added to because he knew he was very good. So it was not really at the moment right idea why we had, why that mass class had mixed group. However, what I see, what everybody teacher said is that for long term, for long term, that kind of a mixed group, it uh, just like coming from diverse background, not only ethnic background, not only different language speakers, but different professions in terms of academic capability. When we have like a mixed group together, even if it doesn't look like working at the moment, it should run for long term. And they have like a student, they do not have only their own academic things, uh, for academic schooling, they do not come to school. What I believe is that that we should invite every student so that they can be also learning good, quick learner, good learner, also very learning is important, but at the same time, they should know how to belong to the society where they belong to, which means when I'm very good, I should be able to how to also learn together with those who are not really quick learner. I should be able to help, how I can help other people who are struggling. At the same time, if I'm not really the best, also I should be able to how to really come up with those we are better. Just like you don't have to feel like awkward, we don't have to feel like embarrassed. But also you should have enough confidence and in encourage to really study together and help each other. In terms of that way, anyway, Pierce's school, I do not know that, actually, my son went to Pierce's school. But I do not know the current building, but the the school, the building itself, it was very inviting. They just wanted everybody gather together, study together. That kind of a model, model is also very innovative. That's how I saw it.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Park? All right, then let's move on to our next candidate. Mr. Readers.
Okay, I'm here, thanks.
All right, Dr. Ashkenazi, go ahead.
Great, thank you. And um, like everyone else, I'm gonna thank you for throwing your hat in the ring. Um, I am curious, what kind of ideologies do you believe parents like me don't want to have their children taught? Because you did say that in your um opening statement. I'd like you to expand on that, please.
Well, I think they, what they don't want is ideologies that they don't share.
You say they, but you realize I'm a parent, so that includes me.
Well, of course, there are many parents and everyone's got their own view. That's why I think we ought to be careful not to have an ideological slant in any school system. Because there are in this town, people of all different religious persuasions of uh moral, different moral viewpoints. And we just got to be careful that when their kids don't go to school, we don't overly slant them towards one particular approach or another. And that's kind of important, actually. You may have your viewpoint, I don't know what it is. But I think you'd be very upset if, for example, your kid came to school and was taught uh right wing ideology, wouldn't you?
Can you, I mean, can you be more specific in an example of what you think would be inappropriate ideology?
Yeah, teaching children that uh everyone's got their predestined place in the world and you've just got to get into yours, that would be a very upsetting ideology. No one's doing that, but that would be the sort of thing you would want to have happen in your, for your children or my children.
Could you, could you pick something more contemporary rather than something that, as you just said, nobody's doing?
Well, uh, you know, uh, there are a lot of things, really. It's just a general viewpoint of the world. But uh, I think what we, what what a lot of parents worry about in Brooklyn is a tendency to level down, for example. So an ideology that prescribes leveling down, I think, would be upsetting to a lot of parents.
What is leveling down? I don't know what that is.
Well, we have a history in this country, you know, I think of generally believing that we want people to level up to a higher level of achievement. It's a highly competitive society, uh, much more so than many other societies. That's part of its charm and part of its problems. But there's an opposite view to that, which is leveling down. That is to say, what we don't want to have in our schools is any child feeling that, you know, their skills are less than any other child children. So that would be a leveling down ideology. These ideas, these methods are not neutral. These ideologies are not neutral. They, they, they have you slanted one way or the other. And I think those parents, you know, when you send your kid to school, you know they're gonna meet different viewpoints. Um, and you accept that within it, within a range, but you don't like to feel that there's a systemic ideology going on, such as leveling down. And when I was out talking about Pierce to ask Ms. Chalobski's question on the Coolidge Corner for several weekends, a lot of parents came and said, I said, what do you think? How's things going? What do you think about the Pierce situation? They said, well, don't know much about Pierce, seems like a lot of money. But what I'm worried about is there seems to be a leveling down. My children are bored. They're bored in school. They go to school. You know, we just arrived from wherever we arrived from, another town, another city, another country. And they, they're not being, they're not being uh entertained, they're not being, their attention's not being kept. And I think there's this, I think there is some leveling down there.
Suzanne?
Very illuminating.
Who said that? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. What was the question?
Suzanne, go ahead. Suzanne's going to ask you a question now.
Yeah, I am. Thank you, David. Thank you, Stephen. Um, I believe you said that one of the things we want to do is provide the best teachers. I agree with you about that. I think we do have some of the best teachers. We want to hold on to them. And you mentioned, I believe, teaching core subjects and not any extras. I wonder if you could elaborate on that. I'm not sure what that means.
Well, if I said not any extras, I I didn't mean that. What I really think is we've got to make sure that all the children have the basic subjects that they're gonna need to do to have to survive. You know, it's, it's in the AI world that we're about to move into, it's gonna be even tougher than it is today. It's very important that people are numerate, that they understand language, that they can use language. These are, these are the skills that most parents want their children uh to have. That doesn't mean you can't teach other subjects, but I think we just got to make sure that we, we have a solid bedrock of those those subjects. We really do need to make sure that that is happening. Um, it, you know, it's not that complicated. It's, you know, it's math, it's English, it's a sense of logic, of causality, some science, things that enable you to interpret the world.
And do you have any opinions on uh social, emotional uh learning and uh you know, the music program, the arts program, I mean?
I think, I I think music is extremely valuable, extremely valuable. Uh, I don't know if we can make it a core curriculum. Not everyone is able to, you know, perform in music the same way, but they should be taught music. It should be part of the curriculum. Uh, arts too. I think that's part of, you know, your, your development of your view of the world, of how you see the world, of an extra dimension to the world. I've tried to understand social, emotional learning. I spent a good part of the early summer going into the literature on it to try and find out what it means and what it does. I couldn't find a lot about it, to be honest, that could tell you one way or the other, whether the impact was gonna be successful or not. I think it's experimental at this point. Um, there are some quite good controlled studies that have been done on social, emotional learning. They came up, they came out with inconclusive results. So I'm not really qualified to talk about it, but I, you know, I'd like to see, I'd like to understand what's behind it. Uh, you know, and that would be a question I'd ask if I were on the school committee. I'm not against it. I'm not for it, just me. I'd just like to understand what it's trying to achieve and whether it is achieving. You know, there've been many trends in education that turned out to be not ideal in retrospect. I don't, don't have any reason to believe this is one of them, but um, you know, I do think we need to ask the question. There needs to be, you know, discussion about what we're doing and whether it's helping. What I do believe, I think we all believe, is that if you have very good teachers and you put a lot of effort into finding good teachers and giving them chance to teach, we all know who's, those of us who've had children, that teachers make a massive difference to a child's outlook, to, you know, their sense of the world. It's, it's a very important skill. And, you know, that's where I put a lot of our attention, finding them, retaining them, paying them adequately and giving them a big role in in the schools.
Ellen?
Hi, Stephen. Um, I'll ask my same question again. Uh, did you uh support the Pierce School Project?
No, I didn't. I thought we needed to renovate Pierce School. I thought a lot of questions weren't really answered properly when it, when, when it was put to the boat. Um, and my view was there are alternatives that weren't properly explored that might have meant we could have saved a lot of time. And more importantly, you know, the lives of kids that I think if we're not careful are gonna be disrupted for many years because I think knocking that building down right in the heart of town, deciding what's underneath it and then putting another one on top of it could be subject to very considerable delays. And if I was, if I were a parent of a Pierce kid today in the early grades, I'd be very nervous about it. So I think, you know, I, my own view was that it was a bad decision, but it was the decision of the people, so.
Mr. Green?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, um, I also want to thank everyone for uh applying for this position on the school committee. Uh, I know that uh you're, you're applying for something that's gonna be hard work. Uh, I was on a school board in Ohio many years ago. Um, it's not easy and uh thank you for jumping into the fray. Um, but my question has to do with um and I want you to answer why you think you have the temperament to work within a school committee um and uh within a town, um, you know, uh, structure. So address the proficiency question, number one. And number two, you talk a lot about in your application uh, the fact that black children are falling behind other students with respect to proficiency in various areas. Uh, but you didn't really give us any sense of whether you have any ideas or opinions as to why there are these gaps in proficiency and what, what we can do about them.
Well, I think the gaps, yeah, thank you. As a bit of a long question, but I'll do my best. I think the gaps in proficiency are because historically, the slavery was a massive insult against an entire group of people that has never been rectified. And the, the issues created by slavery and by creation of an underclass and an underclass amongst Hispanics often as well. I I just go on from generation to generation, generation. The only way to fix it is to bring up the educational level of that group as fast as you possibly can. Because if you don't, you're baking in the same problems, generation after generation. Lower socioeconomic status, worse health, shorter lifespan.
That, that, how do you do it, is the question.
Oh, how you doing? Well, you know, I think there are in general, I think there are six factors that seem to to have been shown to have an effect. The most important is teacher time, time in front of teachers. I think if we really want to address this, we're gonna have to find a way of getting more time in front of teachers at a very early stage because, as you know, work done locally at Harvard shows that there is a significant effect already by the time children enter kindergarten. So we've got to get there very early and we've got to put a lot of focus on it. You know, do I have all the answers? No, but I do think that the lesson of, you know, trying to get anything done is you decide you want to do it and you put a lot of, a lot of effort into it. You make it a focus. Focus is in in any organization, if you really want to achieve something, it's about really focusing on it and get everyone to focus on it. And I think there are gonna be solutions. You know, it's not gonna be that easy, but there are solutions. And it might take a bit of time. But I, you know, I really want to, I think in Brooklyn particularly, we don't have such a huge problem because we've got a relatively minor, small population. That does give us a chance to do something. It's not an overwhelming problem that's gonna sink the whole ship if we put significant amount of effort into it. I think this is a good place to, to, to explore it and get it done. Uh, and I think we can do, you know, we've got, we're a, we're an affluent town. Uh, we've got to use volunteer help. We've got to get people involved in the schools and and the line behind it. So I think it's about focus primarily, you know, focus and picking a few things to do and then really focusing on those and getting them done. And the, the most obvious issue is the declination in proficiency during the summer, which for whatever reason is, is greater amongst those groups than uh than it is amongst a white nation group. Something's gonna be done about that. And I think it probably is about providing education during the summer or some form of learning activity that reduces that rate of decay.
We do need to be somewhat egalitarian in terms of how many minutes we devote to each candidate. So I'm going to ask for the subsequent questioners if you can be a little quicker in your question. And Mr. Readers, if you can be a bit quick in your response, okay? Natalia?
All right, let me try. I'm trying to just get some clarity because I'm hearing some contradictions. So first of the question on ideologies, I just would love to hear specifically from you. When I hear school committee and ideologies, I think critical race theory, I think sexual reproductive health. I'd like to know where you stand on on those issues. But then you said leveling down is an ideology. I don't think it's an ideology. I say, I believe that the school committee really is focused on equity, which sounds like you're also focused on and the core learning, you know, you said to Suzanne, core math and reading, but how do we ensure core math and reading? If on one hand, you're highlighting that you really want these advanced classes. I, I just, I have been hearing contradictions. So I want to give you a chance to sort of spell that out a little bit because I think, I don't think there's a leveling down, but I think there's a priority of equity. And so I want to hear from you, how do you advance equity in the core basics? Um, and sorry, this, David, I didn't follow your answer. Uh, so I, I'm just a little unclear about some of your answers, so thank you.
Well, I think what you do is you, you have a high standard and you try and bring everyone up to it with no regard to who they are, where they come from, or any of the other, you know, discriminatory features. That's how you do it. What you don't do is say, well, we've got to get everyone to a level that everyone else can get to. That's what I mean by leveling down. So it's about talking about and instilling a culture of a high standard all the time, right from kindergarten and making that the goal. And you ju- do whatever you can to bring everyone up to it. And if there's a group of, of children that are lagging behind, then you put extra effort and emphasis to try and bring them up to it. I don't know if that helped at all, but.
All right, Mr. Van Scoik, and then we need to move on.
Yeah, this, this should be a real short question and answer. Um, Stephen Readers, thank you for your answer regarding Pierce School. I think my position on it was well known and you and I are pretty much in alignment on whether we did the right thing by choosing to build it. But now that, as you said, the voters have spoken, we've chosen to build it. Do you um agree with me that um if it's gonna be built, it should be built for the price that was advertised to voters? And we should have a guarantee of that price before we demolish the existing Pierce School?
Yeah, you should never demolish a school or any, before you found out how much it's just gonna cost to build the replacement. That would be crazy, wouldn't it? No one's gonna do that. However, I, 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 yeah, okay.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Readers. We will now on to our next candidate, Ms. Thaw.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Van Scoik, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, actually, there was a hand left up in the air, but I, I might as well go ahead and ask Carolyn the same question that I just asked Stephen Readers. Because I know Helen's gonna ask you your position on the Pierce School. Um, do you believe uh, now that the voters have spoken, that before we demolish the, the existing Pierce School, we, we should have a guarantee that the replacement school will be built for the price that was advertised to voters when they took That was advertised to voters when they took the vote on the school.
Yes, I do.
Any other thoughts?
Um, just generally, I mean, that kind of speaks to the nature of why um, I I was opposed to this particular um, project. To address the Pierce School. During the campaign. Which just has to do with fiscal responsibility and and prudence, so. The 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 project is moving forward, but I think it's imperative. Um, that it moves forward to. The extent possible with. Um, prudence, fiscal prudence and responsibility. This is a municipal project. We're not billionaires.
Okay, Carolyn, thank you so much.
All right, Mr. Warren.
Hi, thank you. Um, and I too want to just take a moment and thank all of the candidates for uh, their their time and effort and their willingness. Uh, to come forward, put themselves out. Um, this is a very difficult and intimidating process, and I just want to thank them. Uh, Carolyn, I'm going to ask you the same question I've asked a prior candidate. Um, what role do you believe the school committee should play? And you know, trying to deal with forecasts and address uh, class sizes if if they have any role at all.
Um, thanks, that's a great question and and very timely, um, because I think as was talked about earlier, there is a real um, problem that's. That's a new problem um, at the high school, so um. I would respectfully disagree with the previous statement that this happens to us every year. Um, in fact, I'm looking at the table. Of um, class sizes at the high school, classes over twenty five students. Is up by twenty classes from last year. One oh four compared to eighty four. Uh, classes with over twenty eight kids is up by twenty one classes. There are thirty eight. Last year there were seventeen. And classes over thirty students is up by twenty. There are twenty two classes with students over. Thirty students and there were two last year. Um, my understanding is this is not a scheduling issue. This is a budget issue. So I think uh, it kind of comes back to what I think I can can offer um, in terms of. Analytical skills, um, seeing the whole picture, having experience with the budget as a member of A C, as a resident, as a parent, as a town meeting member. And as a an observer. Um, a close observer of school committee for several years. I've observed the budget process. Um, and I I look at it really carefully. The 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 high school doesn't have enough teachers. My understanding, in fact, is that there. They they need seven more teachers. Than they have in order to have had the class sizes. As I think. Stakeholders want them to be and and by stakeholders, I don't just mean. Parents, I mean students and most importantly, maybe teachers. Having classes this size is extremely stressful for our teachers.
Chair Perlmutter, can I ask a quick follow up, please? Thank you, thank you, Carolyn, for your answer. So uh, you you know, you are billing yourself as the holistic candidate that sees across schools in town. Of course, you know, we do limit the amount of money that goes to the school budget and they are constrained. Uh, they ask them more and the town says no, or you know, how so you said it's a budget issue. What what would you? What would you where what bucket of money would you move into teachers to help solve the problem?
Well, that's a fair question and a great question. And indeed, you know, every budget process comes down to choices and priorities. It would be difficult for me to sort of pick a particular line item. Um, in in this year's budget, not having it in front of me that I would. Um, choose myself. Um, had I. Been at the table during the budget development process, I probably would have. You know, pointed out. That, for example, adding into central administration. Is going to stress um, student facing teachers. We we hear often, I think that. Staff is ninety percent of the about ninety percent of the school department budget, but that's not necessarily student facing staff. And um. Non-student facing staff um, costs have grown more than student pacing staff um, in recent years. So it would be difficult for me to sort of say specifically, but generally speaking, I think that's that's the work. Making those choices um, and figuring out. Where the money goes, but bottom line. The high school needed seven more teachers than they have, and this is the result. So I don't whatever wherever money went that didn't go to those teachers. Um, I don't think this is a satisfactory result for, I don't think anybody likes the situation now.
Mr. Sandman.
Thank you, Carolyn. The uh, question I have is that you've you've commented, I think that um. Uh, you'd be uh. Representing a part of Brookline that isn't currently represented on the school committee, South Brookline. And I know that the next major school project they'll get is most likely to be uh, the Baker School. Um, but uh, I wonder if you can. Talk a little bit to your. View of uh, how to represent the entire system and recognize the needs of the entire system. Uh, when you're uh, in a particular neighborhood and and interested in a particular school district.
Um, well, I I am interested in my neighborhood. I don't, I don't know if I said something about representing precinct sixteen. In my application.
I don't think you said it in this. Uh, I have heard uh, heard elsewhere, perhaps not from you.
Um. So uh, you know, South Brookline is um. A little bit unique. The the Baker School does have. Some unique um, attributes. In terms of its geographic location, it's kind of isolated. It's. Much more difficult to manage the population at the Baker School with buffer zones because of. How far away it is from other schools. Um, so. You know, were I to be on school committee at the eventual time when um, a a baker project might be contemplated. Uh, I think I could offer that, you know, local perspective. Um, but it's not a. It's not a driver for me in in this process and contemplating becoming part of school committee right now. If that makes sense, I mean. I I live in precinct sixteen, I've I've represented precinct sixteen as a town meeting member for, this is my third term. Um, I think in my work so far on the advisory committee, which has been about fifteen months. I think I've been. Pretty much just, I I I don't see myself as 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 that. Um, but perhaps if there there might be particular issues and instances where. That perspective, I hope could be useful.
All right, Mr.
Thank you.
Mr. Green, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, related to my key question, temperament. Uh, you know what I'm going to ask. Let me put it this way. Someone told me that you are quote, willing to listen and open to changing your mind. Could you give me a recent significant example of that? And secondly, um, I I really uh. Have a reaction when people throw around the word prudence too loosely. Um, prudence is not bean counting. And I was wondering if if your concept of prudence includes the cost of uh, issues of equity. Uh, issues of the cost to students. With disabilities of uh, the existing Pierce building. Uh, the cost of deferring decisions. Uh, like deferring maintenance, but also decisions. Of uh, addressing the problems that the Pierce School raised. So so i- is your concept of prudence broader than just bean counting?
I'm sorry, what was the first part of the question? Is my.
Temperament, temperament.
Temperament.
Right, right.
So an example.
Yeah.
Okay, an example of a a major issue on which I've recently changed my mind.
Significant issue, right.
Significant issue on which I've recently changed my mind. You know? And maybe I. Um. Do, I think. Somewhat in part. To past. What I would call sort of negotiating tactics on the part of. Um, the B E U leadership. I think that I was sort of. Positionally. Opposed. But I I. I think I've matured that view um, very much. Now, I haven't been in the room. So I do support very much. Organized labor and I've really listened to um, the kinds of things. That teachers have said they need that are frustrating. And I think that our teachers are the engine of our system. And they're amazing. Like I went to. The B H S Back to School Night a couple of weeks ago. I kind of said to my husband on the way out like, oh, do this again. I had to go to a wake beforehand and then you go to this night and it's so inspiring. The teachers are amazing. They are bringing it. Um, and they need to be able to bring it. Um, so I that's sort of a long answer and I'm I I wish I could come up with something a little. Clearer or pithier and then. Prudence versus bean counting. So are you saying? You're asking. Where I stand, like, are you asking if I would be? Over the.
I mean, the way you presented the idea of prudence is, you know, add up the beans on this side. Um, versus the other side and figure out which way to or what decision to make. As opposed to looking at not only the cost of a project, but also the cost of not doing a project. What are the costs that we are ignoring now? Um, we need to.
This is actually a great question because um, and this I think came up for. In in some meetings, I'm not sure. Um, recently at the Baker School in my neighborhood. Um, there was a. Project uh, in the playground, which is school property um, to redo the tennis courts and the D P W chose not to install. Um, a ramp for handicap access. There is a child, at least one child at the Baker School right now, who is permanently wheelchair bound. And is unable to access the tennis courts. Um. They are used for P E. Um, I've seen him going to P E. A- and actually just today I learned that the um, entrance that he is typically wheeled to. Which is in private property of Hancock Village is now closed, so. Um, I don't know how that child is going to be getting to P E on the tennis courts. Um, so. That was an example of a place where I felt like it was really important for the town to. Look at um, the value of. Of adding the ramp. Um, that would be necessary for access for that that child or any person in a wheelchair.
All right, uh, Suzanne and then Dr. Ashkenazi. And again, both of you, if you could be quick with your questions, if they answer, it could be a little shorter because we're approaching the upper time limit of some other candidates.
Thank you, David. And thank you, Carolyn. Um, you mentioned that you're analytical, not ideological, and I wonder if you could elaborate on that a little bit. One of our goals is um. A joy of learning, a lifelong learner who has joy in learning. Which may be more on the ideological side rather than the analytical side. I'm not sure. It's a little softer. I just wonder if you could talk about that. You made that. Distinction. If you could say a little more about that.
I think what I'm trying to say there is that I approach issues, I approach problems. From a fact perspective. Um, I I look at what's in front of me and I. And I tried to analyze the. The truth in the information. Um, I use that phrase because somebody said that to me. That 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 was how they saw me and I I sort of took that. Um, as a compliment in the context of that conversation at that time. Um. So. Um, yeah, I mean, I think I I bring. Sort of intellectual. Skill, I ask good questions. Um, I dig into information. Um. And that's sort of my my approach.
All right, thank you. Dr. Ashkenazi, go ahead.
Yep, mine will be short because I wrote it ahead of time. Thanks, Carolyn. It was good to see you on Friday in person.
Yeah.
Um, so it and and it's a little bit of a riff off of what Bernard was getting at, I think, which is your focus is heavily on the fiscal guide, fiscal side of what the school committee does. So, but there is a lot more, right? Committee, a part of it is the fiscal piece, but a part of it is equity, mental health support, curriculum development. So how do you see your contributions to those other aspects of the school committee work?
Thanks, that's that's a good question and and you're right. I am heavily emphasizing that because I think um. That's something in particular that I bring, but um. You know, I have a master's degree in education. My focus during my master's work was. Um, in a a program called Literacy, Language and Cultural Studies. I've always. Um, been interested in. How people think, how people learn, how people experience the world. Um, I had a a career in nonprofit in direct service. I worked for Fair Test. I worked for a variety of um. Immigrant service groups. Um, so. Uh, that's just sort of who I am, so um. Thank you for sort of course correcting me if I'm sounding overly um. Fiscal or or analytical. You know, I love our schools. Almost to the like, it could just make me cry sometimes. Um. I think, you know, Brookline has offered so many. Rich, rigorous um, programs and opportunities. And uh, I I hope we can. Maintain those, like world language is one. Which I'm I I've been sort of distressed to see that. Potentially being dismantled to some extent. I hope we we won't have to do that. Does that answer your question?
All right, Helen.
Because. Yeah, since John took away my question, I think I'll ask another one. Um. So I'm in my experience on the school committee, I've found that the school committees that work the best work as a team. We don't always agree, but we respect one another. And we work as a team. How do you play in the sandbox?
Um. Well, you know, again, for the last. Fifteen months I've been on advisory. Um. I think that's, I've really enjoyed that experience. Um. What I love about it is that it's a large committee. Um, of. Mostly, you know, really. Smart. Experts in their field and a wide variety of perspectives and opinions. And so that's been a great opportunity. Um, to start maturing my collegiality, um, my listening. Um, and kind of. Transitioning from, you know, I I'm I'm an advocate. I'm strong. That's who I am. Um, and I'm proud of that. Um, but I'm also interested in in committee work. So A C has been a good experience for for starting to mature. Um, that transition or sort of blending. Um, my my natural inclination to. To advocate to understanding um, committee work and the importance of of. Collegiality.
All right, thank you. Okay, so uh, thank you, Ms. Thaw. And with that, we will move on to our sixth candidate. Dr. Zaretsky.
Hey, I think I have again problem with my video.
We, well, we saw you for a moment again.
Um. I have prob- do you hear me?
We hear you.
I have problem with the video again. But I think I have problem with the video again. Maybe it's, it's my computer. Because too many things are open.
All right, Dr. Ashkenazi, go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, so I, I found your background quite fascinating. Um, and I'm just wondering if you can speak to how you think COVID has impacted this current cohort of students and what you might do to help address that if you were on school committee.
Okay, thank you for that question. Um. I, I've been working with individuals with certain specific difficulties in learning and knowing um a bit about child psychology, about the way children learn. Um, COVID did make a number on our kids. There is no question about it. No question about it. I'm not sure that our approach to COVID was always correct in terms of um face-to-face learning. Uh, there has been a lot of talk that, you know, um children have to see the face in order to learn, which is true when they're learning the language. When the child is older and in school, I think that maybe wearing masks and being in a classroom would still make a difference compared to learning by Zoom. Because learning by Zoom, it's, it's great, but the teacher does not have a full view of everyone. I mean, you cannot do it at the height of the infection. But as it subsides, probably we should have been open that particular venue to the kids. Because now we have to go back and we have to regroup and we have to catch up. I hope it opens, answers your question. Um, and I, oh, it worked.
There you are.
Yeah, here I am.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Green.
Yeah, of course, as I've said, my main concern is temperament. Uh, so if you could give me a quick example of how you play well in the, in the, what, what'd you call it? Uh, Helen, play, playground?
No, sandbox.
Just quick answer, but my main, my main question really has to do with this. Uh, your background uh in terms of the major issues or a major issue facing us here in Brookline is very, very um interesting. And that issue is, of course, the learning gap that we, we uh this, we see, I mean, I am told we see uh between black and white students. Um, and I'm really intrigued with your experience working with Arab students in Israel to bring them educational opportunities, particularly developmental issues uh that they uh face and issues of trauma, whether, you know, minor or major that, that you have to overcome in, in bringing them uh these educational opportunities. I mean, that seems to be something that can really be informative to the issues that we face here in Brookline. Or anywhere, really.
Yeah.
Ellen?
Wait, I, I asked a question, David.
I thought that was a question.
Yes, that was a question.
It was a long question, but it was a question.
It was a question. Um, so in terms of temperament, I've sat in a lot of IP meetings in my capacity as a speech-language pathologist. And throughout the years and, you know, working on different comedians and different groups and doing a lot of research, I think the best approach is, speaking of temperament, is to listen. If you have the capacity to listen to what the other opponent is saying and trying to, very much to understand what the other person is saying, I think we shouldn't have problems with that. It's, it's a question of respect to the other opinion. It's a question of, as I said, it's a question of listening. And if we're a good listener, I don't see the problem of people working together as a group and coming with specific decision and specific answers. In terms of working with um population which is disadvantaged. Again, uh, Mr. Green kind of, you know, mentioned that right now I am working um with my colleague in Israel and we are working with Arabic schools. Okay, because this is disadvantaged population. These are Israeli Arabs. This is not anyway, it's middle of Israel. So it's, they live and work in Israel. And yet still, there are differences. There are differences in the way they learn. There are differences in the way they taught because for some reasons, the teachers who come to teach in Arabic schools and Arabic population can choose to go to Hebrew schools, Hebrew speakers, speaking schools, or stay within their own community. For some reason, the teachers who go to Arabic-speaking schools are not really as well-qualified as the others. And what we try to do, we're trying to um analyze the data that we had because we implemented a very specific program for those students. And it's all based on oral language, although they have problems with written language because Arabic is very interesting language. It's all the glossic. It, meaning that oral language is completely different from written language. So they are considered to be bilingual to begin with. So whatever language they add up makes them trilingual, quadrilingual, and so on and so on. So what we did, we implemented the program which is based on art. So we're showing them art, paintings, photographs, um scenes from all around the world. And we asked them to talk about it. We script the lessons to include the words that they're learning. So they're not kind of, you know, at the loss of what to use. But this is interesting because um the program was based on what we developed a long time ago at Clark University. And um we had to change the art because what we present to children here is quite different from their experience. We decided to go with their own experience. And I actually have a testimony of a teacher, Arabic-speaking teacher, who is teaching English as a foreign language, who said that you would not believe how excited they were to come to those lessons. They had no idea that they have their own poets, that they have their own artists. They, you know, and they were given an opportunity to talk about something that is near and dear to them. And actually, you know, if they had access to internet, if they had access to all the media, they went on the internet trying to find more information. So this is something, you know, that can be done with any group of kids because kids want to learn. It's a question of how you approach certain things.
Thank you. Helen?
Yeah, excuse me for coughing, guys. I'm sorry. I didn't know I wasn't on mute. Um.
I'm sorry. It was a long answer.
No, that's okay. I should have been on mute. But thank you for your response. I'm gonna ask you the same question as I asked everybody else about the peer school and your support for that.
Uh, we did vote for peer school. We did.
Thank you.
Stephen?
Uh, thanks. Uh, thanks, Dr. Zaretsky. I just want to ask you, given that this is a, a one-year position, if there are any issues on which you're particularly keen to work?
Um, I would love to work in the issues of equity. Absolutely. There is kind of, you know, what I'm very interested in. And I think there can be a lot done in this particular area. Yeah.
Thank you.
Class size would be also an issue.
Mariah?
Thank you. Um, I don't have a specific question for you, Dr. Zaretsky. I wanted to thank you and all of our um candidates for coming tonight. Um, I thought all of your presentations were very interesting and, and thank you, Dr. Zaretsky, specifically for talking about your work. It was very interesting. Um, and I, I'm very excited to hear the type of interest, broad interest and engagement that there is in joining the school committee. So thank you all again.
Thank you.
Suzanne?
Yeah, thank you, David. And thank you, Dr. Zaretsky. I just, I also just wanted to say thank you to all the candidates who have joined us tonight. Um, I, and just to say that only one person will be selected tonight. I was in the same position six or seven years ago. I was not appointed uh to the school committee. I did run the next May and I won that election. So uh, if you are not selected tonight, uh, I would still encourage you to go to the voters in the spring and, and run for office then. So thank you.
I will. I will. Thank you for encouragement. Yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
Natalia?
Thank you, Dr. Zaretsky. I was looking through your publication record and I think, you know, given we have such a large English language learner bilingual community, um, I, I would love your thoughts on how, you know, how you think you might contribute to the curriculum development and, and what sort of um, you know, linguistic sort of combinations. There was even some discussion on school committee about whether we want to consider immersion programming, you know, foreign language learning has been a big issue, but also the, the reverse, the English language learning.
Okay, um, I am very much for immersion programs, very much so, because immersion programs actually combine the native language with the new language. And native language will support the learning of a new language. Okay, because there is this, what we call cross-linguistic transfer. The better you are at your L1, the better your L2 is going to be. So this has to be part of any decision. Do we want to actually cap off all these programs for bilingual kids? And just sing a swim, you know, put them in, they will learn. I mean, they will learn. There's no question about it. Eventually, eventually. The quality of it will be slightly different. Okay, so if we can do anything to support their L1 while we are giving them tools for L2, that will be probably the ideal situation. Ideal situation. And people often say that, well, you know, when the child is young, um, they learn very quickly. It's very easy. For older children, it's much more difficult. It's not quite so. And my experience with my own daughter, when we first came, she was two and a half. And we came to Tanglewood because we were brought here by Leonard Bernstein and my husband won the audition being in Tanglewood for Boston Symphony. And we went to a concert and, you know, she was a cute little kid. And people would come up to her and she would look with big eyes, do this and say, io no capito italiano. Because we spent some time in Italy beforehand. And I have to say that even being so, she actually, actually had difficulties transitioning full-time to English. We spoke only Russian at home. She could not speak Italian, as we know. She started to speak Hebrew because we spent a year in Israel. So it was really very difficult. And it wasn't an immersion because nobody in kindergarten, in first grade, nobody had that support that, you know what? Let's try to bring what she knows in her own language to what she can learn in another. Until second grade, we, where she went to former devotion school. I still cannot say Florida. You know, it's devotion school for me. Um, so anyway, um who actually opened her up. And from that point on, because he, he was interested in her background. He was interested in what she knew and how she could interact with other kids and what she can bring to other kids. So yeah, I, I, it's, it's very important question, you know, how we should address that. And, you know, Brookline is a melting pot. I mean, you know, there's no other school system that has a diversity of Brookline, honestly. Our granddaughter is Newton and she says, I want to be in Brookline. I said, okay, yeah, I can take you to my house and you will be in Brookline. Okay? So, but she absolutely, because she interacts during the summer with kids from Brookline and she kept saying, oh, they learn so much.
All right. Thank you. Now, uh, sorry, I don't want to interrupt you. We're trying to be somewhat even with.
Sure, absolutely.
And for, for that reason, I do want to, uh, well, first of all, thank you very much, Dr. Zaretsky, for appearing.
Thank you.
There were a couple of candidates who didn't quite get as much time as others. So if anyone has some questions, a, a, another question or two for Ms. Moktader or for Dr. Park. Stephen?
I'd actually like to ask the same question to Ms. Moktader that I asked to Dr. Zaretsky. If there are any uh top priorities that she'd like to work on this next year, given that it is a one-year term.
Yeah, so I think you can kind of tell that I'm very um calculated and when I wanted, when I wanted to join for this vacancy and then um to follow it up with a run for the um, for the seat in, in May. Um, I think that there's a lot for me to dig into with us just having done the middle school review as well as the world language review. And I think that, you know, having been a middle school teacher since 2004 in the district, it gives me a little bit to, to understand. Um, I think that we have some recommendations there to follow through with. And I would love to be a part of that work with the middle school review, um, looking at scheduling, looking at um ways that our talented staff could be used better um to, to leverage the middle school program. And I also um share what other people have said about um world's language that I think that we are very lucky in Brookline to have a program. We have it fully funded. And now what we need to do is just work with what we have in order to um make it into the program that we, that we want to have. So I think that those would be two of my things. Um, I also tried to mention before, and I don't know if I gave enough airtime, that I I think, and I've heard this um again tonight from other candidates, is that I think that we do a very good job of hiring in Brookline and we want to make sure that we do a good, a good job of making this a great place to work for superintendent, central office, teachers, so that we keep talent and um we, you know, continue to build on consistency because they, they, they know our town and they can build on the work that they're doing.
Thank you.
All right. And any questions for Dr. Park? All right. Well, I would like to thank all six of our candidates who are applying. As Suzanne mentioned, we only are going to be able to select one of you. By no means is that an indictment on the other five. And as Suzanne mentioned, uh, all six are of you are able to run in May and have the voters elect you directly. Uh, so thank you again, everyone, for putting yourself out there and coming on tonight and fielding our questions. At this point, we will now shift toward a discussion of what our thoughts are on the candidates and which one of the six we would like to select. And uh, by law, seven, at least seven of us need to vote for the winning candidate. If we don't get to seven, we don't have a uh replacement for Nancy Ray Gore who resigned and created this vacancy. Dr. Ashkenazi?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, and it's just a question.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, and it's just a question, would, would there be any value in a bit of a straw poll, David, to see if there's a candidate that is already rising to the top?
I think that's fine. That's the direction we want to go in. Mr. Saman?
I was just thinking of this would be a wonderful case for ranked choice voting. There, there are some very good candidates here. And it's, you know, it's not going to be easy to choose.
Ellen?
You're on your turn.
Sorry, only I could hear what I was saying. I think that, you know, like I said before, I think I'm very pleased with all the candidates who applied. I think that for me at least, Sarah Moktader sort of presents the, the a piece of what we could use on the school committee in terms of a teacher who has experience. And we've had teachers in the past on school committee. And I feel that 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 would be something that could be in addition to the school committee, along with somebody who plays well in the sandbox. So that would be my thought.
So Ryan? A vote or straw poll?
So we might go there in a moment. I just want to hear from everyone who wants to participate first. Mariah?
Thank you. Um, I think I, I generally agree with Helen. I was been reflecting a lot on both the candidate materials. Sorry, candidate materials that we received earlier this week and sort of the different skills and experience that we have on school committee now. And it's wonderful that we have some educator experience, particularly Suzanne, who has so much experience. But I do also miss the other voices that we used to have, for example, Barbara and Jennifer. And I think that having additional educator experience would be very valuable. And so for that reason, I'm also leaning towards Sarah at this time.
Mr. Warren?
Oh, hi, thank you. I didn't think I was next, but I'll go. Um, so this, all the candidates were amazing. They all bring a very different, I think, perspective and value to, to the position. I have known Sarah for a while, have spent quite a bit of time with her and greatly appreciate, you know, her perspective and her, her teaching experience and specifically her world language perspective. I do want to say also that, you know, I, I was on the other side of the Pierce issue from Carolyn Tholl. I don't, you know, I don't see a litmus test here with Pierce as, as an issue. You know, I, I, I think that it's important that, that we have different perspectives. I, I will say that I've worked a lot with Carolyn. She and I don't always agree, frankly, but I have a tremendous amount of respect for her analytic ability, her ability to explore an issue, to keep an open mind. I think she didn't do herself credit on being able to switch because I think I've flipped her in a few issues over, over the years. But again, I just, I just, this idea that if you didn't vote for Pierce, I don't know if that's where Helen's going. But no, I know, but it, 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 it kind of felt that way, Ellen, but that's okay. I just, you know, I think that it's important to have a variety of perspectives on the school committee. And you guys have a good diverse group of opinions right now. And I, you know, to tell you the truth, you know, Carolyn kind of reminds me a little bit of Mariah. They have a bit of the same background on advisory. They were both on the school finance subcommittee. They're both very analytical. They asked a ton of smart questions. So again, I see, I see value in, in, for me, the shortlist is the two. And I'm, you know, a lot of it will be depending on what the school committee wants as a member to add because it is eventually, you know, your committee, it's your committee and your member. But I do see the value of having someone that brings a different perspective than what you already have. And I, and I do value that because frankly, that, that's been me for a lot of my, my political career in Brooklyn as well. So that's enough. That's what I'll say. Thank you.
Mr. Green?
Yeah, as I've said, my issues are temperament, but also the skill set that a candidate can bring to the schools with respect to the issues that the schools face. Of course, I'll consider what school committee members think about, you know, those issues and what they're looking for. But those two things are important to me. And from that standpoint, two candidates stand out, in my opinion, Sarah Moktader and Elena Zaretsky. I really was fascinated by Elena's discussion of her work in Israel because I think that's I mean, it's, it's, it's just, it's fascinating. Anyway, and I think it's very, very helpful in terms of some of the issues we face. But I think that Sarah Moktader kind of would be my selection because she has such a deep understanding of our school system and how it functions or that the granular level as well as, you know, her, her skill set. So that's, that's my thoughts at this point in time.
Andy?
Yeah, thanks. I'd also like to talk about Ms. Moktader. Something I appreciated about her responses was that she showed a really clear understanding of the limits of the school committee's power. She talked about the dangers of overloading the system with too many initiatives and, you know, was very clear on how it's not straightforward to translate good intentions into good outcomes on school committee. And in my book, that's a big part of what would let her, so hit the ground running as a new member. So I'm happy to support her.
Mr. Saman?
So my remark about ranked choice voting, I wasn't kidding. Because I, it's interesting to hear that a couple of us have choices. A couple, two candidates in particular that stand out. And for me, those candidates are Sarah and, and Carolyn. Sarah Moktader and Carolyn Tholl. I was, I, I honestly will say that I am, I was concerned about adding someone who has teaching experience and been a member of the, the teachers' union for a long time. And I'm very much reassured on that point. I think her comment that she's running as a parent is is telling. And I appreciate that. And I have no doubt that she understands the complexity of how the system works because she explained it when, when she was talking about scheduling. On the other hand, Carolyn is very eloquent. And with regard to Pierce, she and I talked on the phone earlier today. And one of the things she said to me is, you know, let's water over the dam or something to that effect. It's gone, you know, that's done. And I think it's, it's time to leave that aside and think about, well, you know, I, I don't care what she disagreed with me or disagreed with me. We were absolutely on opposite sides. But she brings an analytical capability that I think is very valuable, particularly on a school committee where there are representatives who have been teachers and there are people who have parents purely a parent's perspective, were very nearly, well, purely, that's not fair, but who, who bring initially a parent's perspective.
Stephen?
Thanks. So first, I thought it was a really strong crop of candidates. I thought they all brought something, if not a lot, to the table. I, I Michael, your question to Ms. Moktader was the question that I had and it was clear that she had really thought through her answer and I really appreciated that. And I, I agree with Mariah that I felt that with Jennifer Monopoly's absence from the school committee, there is a point of view that's missing and that's a teacher's point of view. And I think that it would benefit the school committee to have a teacher's point of view again. I also really appreciated how she was already really plugged into what the school committee is up to. She had really realistic expectations about what she could accomplish in a year. She had clear ideas of what, what she wanted to accomplish over that period of time. And I also thought that Carolyn Tholl presented as, as a really strong potential school committee member. I think she's demonstrated that she shows up, she does her homework, she has a lot of strength to create change. She's really persistent. I think we all know that. And I have no concerns about the extent to which I have disagreed with her on issues in the past because I think I think she would be a team player. I felt convinced by that in this. So I feel lucky that we have strong candidates. And I feel like we had two candidates that were really strong and I really, Paul, I liked your comments summing up our conundrum.
Mr. Van Squire?
Yes, thank you very much. You know, I, I guess I'm, I see myself as a contrarian. So I'll, I'll give a couple of contrarian comments here. You know, the expression plays well in the sandbox has been used several times tonight. And I think we need to be careful about wanting every, every single person on the school committee to be a person who's just like every other person on the school committee and is right in the groove of our comfort zone. I think personally that this is an excellent, we have an excellent school committee. But if I would fault them for anything, it's that they do not often enough rock the boat, challenge the assumptions, raise questions that nobody else is raising, dig in, take risks and push, push, push the system. And it occurred to me early in the evening that looking at this list of six people, it's an extraordinary list of six people. And I could very well imagine Brookline with a school committee in which six of the nine members were these six. And it would be a terrific school committee. It would have, you know, sure, it would have some people, more than one, who are taking it in different directions and trying new things and pushing the system constantly to improve. But that's not a bad thing. And so I, I, I don't want people to get over enamored of this notion of whoever we choose has to be the person who plays best in the sandbox and is just like the other members of the school committee. And I have three candidates. I've had three candidates in mind ever since I saw the original list. I'll disclose a little something about a couple of them. Elena Zaretsky and I are good friends and I treasure that friendship and that acquaintanceship that we have had. And it is through her connection to music and a connection that I have to music through some work that my wife and I do as volunteers for something called the Metropolitan Opera La Fonte Auditions Competition, actually. And Elena has been a volunteer with that organization for many years. And it's been a pleasure to work with her. Arthur and I have a terrific relationship that involves occasional walks around the Brookline Reservoir. And we've gotten to know each other better and we serve together on the Brookline Adult and Community Education Committee. And he's been on, he, he, he has been on that committee for literally decades. And so his involvement with the schools isn't just that he was a school parent at one time. But it's also that he has broadened the definition of what is education in the community through the Brookline Adult and Community Education Program. Carolyn Tholl and I have gotten to know each other better. We started off on the opposite side of the political fence on a really big issue that went to the ballot. And then later we, we became sort of allies, at least in terms of our goals in, in backing a, a question that went on the ballot. And I keep a pretty good look at school committee meetings and show up regularly and she's almost always there. She's, she's so involved, not just as a parent, but as a person who's constantly following what the school committee is doing and what the schools are doing. So my three choices are Arthur, Elena and Carolyn. My vote in this instance goes to Carolyn. Or will go to Carolyn when we take the vote.
Natalia?
Thanks so much. And I, I sort of agree with Michael that ranked choice voting would be really helpful, Mike, in this scenario. So I came in thinking that we need more diversity on our board in terms of racial, ethnic. So I was really looking to Arthur, Young Park, you know, I, I really do think that that is a missing piece, but I'm convinced by listening to this interview that this is a short-term position. So we really need someone who can sort of get started and perform in the next few months. And Sarah and Carolyn are two people who I think most confidently performed in this scenario, in this interview as people who I think would bring a lot of expertise immediately to the race. And, you know, I care deeply that Sarah has the background of, of teaching. I think that is really unique. And, you know, she said she's joining as a parent, but I think her experience, you know, you can't really separate the two, but I think her teaching experience is really relevant. And, you know, I thought, I thought she did really well, also understanding kind of the complexity. And, and now, you know, to your point, John, about wanting opposing voices, we, we just read this book called The Governance Core on school boards and really about unity versus, you know, how you bring about unity in, in action and direction because you don't want different voices sending the superintendent mixed messages, you know, so some of the, your eagerness to sort of disrupt and shake things up could, I think, be actually quite catastrophic for a school system in, in some ways. I do like the idea of debate and disagreement. And I don't think we actually agree on everything. But we also need to have a unified vision and direction. And, you know, Carolyn, I, I was convinced also, like, you know, I, I have engaged in other settings where I think she would identify as an advocate, that she would want to be a team player. I worry a little bit in the short term that relationships, existing relationships could hamper or cause some, you know, challenges in the short term. But my top two candidates coming out tonight are Sarah and Carolyn. And you know, I, I'm slightly more aligned to vote for Sarah, but I could be convinced differently because of her experience and because of her temperament, as Bernard said, which comes up a lot in this Governance Core book. Actually, I didn't expect, had I not read this book last week, I think maybe I wouldn't have taken that part so seriously. But now I'm sort of convinced that that's important for a school committee.
Valerie?
Thank you, David. I don't want to take up too much time on the same folks, but I, I too think that, that Sarah and Carolyn have risen to the top for me this evening for very different reasons. I, I do think that that educator perspective has been something that we've seen as lacking, as we have sort of moved through this last year, year and a half or so with Jennifer, not on the committee and with others before her. And in terms of Carolyn, we don't often agree on issues or lots of issues. But I do appreciate her analytical way of thinking. I appreciate her commitment to town in all sorts of arenas and AC town meeting, following schools. And yes, so it's going to be a tough vote and I encourage everybody to run in the spring who's interested.
Dr. Ashkenazi?
I, I'll, I'll keep mine short because I think a lot of the same stuff, but I liked, well, I liked, I did like Carolyn's answers and I am, I did also like Elena a lot. I think the two that really rose to the top to me were because really this issue of what's missing on the select board right now. And I think you have, in fact, the analogy to Mariah, you have somebody who is that quite, quite financially analytical on this, on the school committee. But I think that teacher perspective is missing. And so I do think that's why Sarah rises to the top for me and she does really seem like she can hit the ground running. And Arthur, actually, because I really feel like that is a missing perspective and lens. So, so I think those, those are the two that really rise to the top for me. Thank you.
Suzanne?
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, so I would welcome another educator on the board. I think Sarah could, as we say, hit the ground running. I will support her. I, I am grateful to Arthur for all he's done in terms of serving on, on committees and on base. That's really important. I thank him for that work. I thank Carolyn for being on the advisory. So she's still involved with the schools and will have a voice there. And so I'm looking to give an opportunity to, to get a different voice that we have. And I would, I will support Sarah for that.
So my sentiments are similar to those articulated by several of you. As Paul Warren said, I don't view this as needing to have a litmus test on any one political issue. I think that also as Natalia referenced, the Corps of Governance book and that unity is not uniformity. I think it's fine for members of school committee to have different positions on issues, even threshold issues like Pierce. I think it's fine for there to be minority voices. There's nothing wrong with that. For me, it's more about experience, who can hit the ground running and who can contribute a voice that is currently lacking. Uh, for me, it's more about experience, who can hit the ground running and who can contribute a voice that is currently lacking. And by that criteria, the three that rise for me would be Arthur, Sarah, and Carolyn. All right, so Bernard Want and uh also Miriam wanted a straw poll.
No, Mike did.
Oh, Mike?
I'm sorry, straw poll.
Ranked choice voting.
Oh, yeah, straw poll, good.
All right, so who wants to go first? So I don't want to put anyone under pressure there going first, although John's already indicated his vote, but go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I'm perfectly happy to go first. I I'll follow up on what I said. I I I'll put uh Carolyn first, and if you do rank choice, then my second choice would be, very close one, will be Sarah.
All right, Dr. Ashkenazi?
Uh, I'm going to put Sarah first and Arthur next.
All right, Suzanne?
I'm putting Sarah first.
Natalia?
Putting Sarah first.
Mr. Green?
I'm putting Sarah first, but I do want to just say that I'd like to have uh Elena Zaretsky as my number two, and if she's not selected, I'd urge her to get engaged uh with the school committee uh in the town. I think she can be invaluable. But Sarah's my first choice.
All right, at this point, I'll go in order of boxes. Helen?
Oh, Sarah.
Okay, John?
Carolyn.
Stephen?
Sarah.
All right, uh Natalia? I'm sorry, you already went. Uh, Valerie?
Sarah.
Paul?
David, can I ask you, what is the, what is the count? I'd like to see it live come. You know, I think you already have said, you have seven for Sarah at this point, is my point.
Point, let's see.
Yes. Section seven.
Yes, we're at seven for Sarah.
So it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter what I do. Uh, so no, I know. I I will say, I can tell you, I am so torn about this. I I have to tell you um that I I respect both of these individuals. I think they, either one of them would would be amazing um to be a contributor to uh to the school committee. Um, I I value what the school committee is saying, though. The school committee is saying, we've got a budget person, we've got, you know, this, we've got that, and what you're missing um is is a a teacher, uh, a teacher's viewpoint. So um I guess I would, I would uh say that since you already have seven for Sarah, I'm going to say I'll be the eight for Sarah. Um, but it 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 is, I'm very torn that I could see uh Carolyn doing a great job, and I see that she doesn't have the votes.
Andy?
Sarah.
Mariah?
Thanks. Um, I am voting for Sarah, and I also want to say, you know, in addition to all my thanks to all the candidates earlier, I was also, you know, really um looking forward to hearing tonight's comments from our, from our candidates and just really um thrilled with all the different perspectives that we heard about and the expertise that's on available to us in the town of Brookline, and and I really do hope that, as others have mentioned, that people will um run again in the future. But again, I will, at this time, vote for Sarah.
All right, it's a close call for me as well, but seeing the direction that we're going in and also that we do currently lack a teacher voice, uh, I'll go with Sarah as well. So why don't we now make this an official roll call? Helen?
I thought we were done.
So uh
How do you want to do this? What?
You should move Sarah's name and then take a vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
But
Second.
I move Sarah Moktader for school committee, the open spot.
And I'll second it.
All right, Helen, your vote?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Mr. Van Skoyak?
Uh, we we should, I think we have to vote separately.
That's right. All right, um, Stephen?
Yes.
Natalia?
Yes.
Valerie? Andy?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
And I also vote yes.
Okay, for the select board, uh, I move uh the appointment of uh Sarah Moktader to the school committee. All in favor, please indicate by si- do I need a second?
I'll second anyway.
Yes.
Okay.
Sure.
Um, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Uh, John Van Skoyak?
Aye.
Uh, Miriam Ashkenazi?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay, that's it.
All right. Cong- congratulations, Sarah. Welcome to the school committee. I go to town hall tomorrow, talk to Ben, and you'll be able to join us as soon as this Thursday.
And thank you to all the candidates who put themselves up. It's not an easy thing to do, and we appreciate it.
Yeah.
And at this point, we uh do need to hold an official vote to dissolve, so if someone like to move that we dissolve the joint convention?
I'll move it.
Awesome.
Thank you, Stephen. Helen, your vote?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Natalia?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Mariah?
Mariah's got.
And I also vote yes.
Okay, I move that we dissolve the joint convention. All in favor of this, on the select board, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyak?
Aye.
Miriam Ashkenazi?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Okay, Paul Warren?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.